Good evening. Welcome to the February 3rd, 2020 meeting of the Stillwater City Council. I will call this meeting to order and I will ask you all to stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will get started with the consent docket under item three on our agenda. Consent docket has meeting minutes. Welcome, Counselor Wedlake.
Thank you. Good to be here, sir.
Meeting minutes and a budget amendment related to the insurance consulting contract that we discussed our last meeting. Is there questions, comments, or motion on the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. Item four, public comment on items not scheduled for public hearings. We have one on this, under this agenda item. We have Steve Carpenter here who is going to talk about the appointments to the Transportation Projects Committee and related matters.
Yes.
Welcome, Steve.
Thanks. Steve Carpenter, 201 West Hall of Fame Avenue. I just wanted to quickly talk to you guys as a council. We are business owners on Hall of Fame Avenue and I know there's been a lot of talk about options that we have to add quality of life things to our city, which I think are vitally important for whether it be residents, business owners, all those things for attracting business and keeping talent local. We had an initial meeting with a lot of the property owners the other day concerning the bike corridor that's, I guess, is being studied, or I'm not quite sure of the process, but I know it's kind of a, kind of a back and forth thing. But just as after that meeting and talking to some people, and I know we're all passionate about different things, and I know that Stillwater is a bicycle-friendly community and those are things that, something we can build on. I also know there's like a ground swell of support. It's kind of coming out now with, I'll call it Love Our Stillwater. I don't know if that's necessarily the name, but I know there were some meetings last week and I attended a meeting in the evening and I just, I think maybe if, if there's going to be an overall plan, maybe, I'm just asking you guys to consider when that plan comes out or when that plan's being formulated, maybe to see if this is the highest and best use of husband avenue. If, if a professional were to come in there and say, "This is the best and highest use", then we obviously want what's best for the city. But we also want to make sure that we are, are protecting our businesses that are located in that area and also protecting the city when it comes to growth, development, those kind of things. And I, I know there's many different opinions on that. I mean, obviously, my opinion's going to be based on business and development. Those are the things I know. So I guess I'm just asking you guys, and I'll finish with this, just to consider not rushing to, maybe rushing to this, maybe taking some time and looking and seeing if it really makes sense from a, from an overall standpoint for what's best for Stillwater. I guess best and highest use. That's the end of my comments.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
I appreciate that and certainly when we do get to the applications around the task force on transportation, that is one of the projects that they'll be discussing and we'll take up those conversations as part of that, that task force. So thank you for your comments and for being here. That takes us down to public hearings. Item six, six A, receive public comment regarding request for a specific use permit for a medical marijuana dispensary, Dubway dispensary at 210 North Hope. This is CC-20-23. Mr. Dorman, do we have good notice on this item?
Ms. Gross.
Yes, doing great. How are you?
I'm well.
Let's see, Lance Gross with the Community Development Department. And the first and only application before you tonight is, is a specific use permit for a property located on 210 North Hope. This is the area map. Hopefully, this will give you a little orientation as to where it's located. Main Street is over here on the right-hand side. Miller is down here. Brown's Bottle Shop is right here. Sonic Drive-In is over here off of Main Street and Stillwater Flats is right here. The subject site is right here, the hatch pattern. And this is an aerial view looking straight to the west. Miller over here on the left-hand side runs east and west. North Main Street runs north and south on the bottom of the photo. And the yellow boundary is the subject site. And this is a street view looking to the west. The yellow border indicates the, the site. This is the building in question that'll be used as a dispensary. This is a multifamily garage apartment, probably what it was years ago, but that's not part of the, the actual dispensary. And now I'd like to call up Kelly Harris to explain the application. She's the owner's representative.
Kelly Harris with Keystone Engineering located at 923 South Lowry. Here representing the owners tonight. This dispensary will be going into an existing commercial building that's currently vacant right now, so all of the utility connections and parking are already onsite and available. Do you have any questions for me?
I do, Kelly.
Sure. Reading the report from the Planning Commission meeting that said that they, the owners do not plan any outside improvements to the building.
Right.
So does that mean that this does not kick in any requirements for the Form Base Code area?
That is correct.
Even including signage?
Um, signage has been taken out of the Form Base Code and so it goes, it, um, the sign size requirements are what is allowed by regular code. It's not necessarily in the Form Base Code section.
Okay. No sidewalk improvements or?
None are required.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Any others? Thank you.
At this point, I will open the public hearing and I will close the public hearing. There's no one signed up to speak on this item. And ask Lance for Planning Commission recommendation.
Yes, the Planning Commission made a recommendation by a vote of four to zero to recommend approval.
Thank you, Lance.
Yes.
Counselors, any further questions or comments? Is there a motion on this item?
Motion to approve item CC-20-23, a medical marijuana dispensary at 210 North Hope.
We have a motion and a second to approve this specific use permit. Please vote. With a vote of three to two, with Vice Mayor Darlington and Counselor Wedlake voting no, that item is approved. On six B, we have a member in from staff requesting a postponement to the March 2nd, 2020 council meeting on this item. Counselors, is there a motion to postpone to March 2?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to postpone item six B to the March 2, 2020 meeting. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that item is postponed. Item seven, general order seven A, consider an appeal from Rex Hayes of cleanup order for property at 1010 and 1012 South Main Street. Mr. Dorman?
I'm going to handle this one, sir. This is an appeal from an administrative order directing the property owner Rex Hayes to remove junk and debris from property located at 1010 and 1012 North Main, or excuse me, South Main. This is done pursuant to Title 11 subsection 22111, which is a different section than you've been dealing with, with the dilapidated houses and so forth. And basically what this does is it allows the code enforcement officers to go out to a location where you have high weeds and grass, or you have junk and trash debris, things like that, and you issue what's known as a 10-day order. And basically, you give the property owner 10 days to clean up the mess and if they don't clean it up, then the city has the right to come in and do an abatement. If however, the property owner disagrees with the code officer's determination, then they have the right to come in and appeal. And that's what you have in front of you tonight. Mr. Hayes has decided that he wants to appeal the 10-day notice that was issued to him on December 30th of 2019 by James Moore. And just for the record, the notice was given to him on that date. It was hand-delivered to him and it was also posted on the property approximately 10:30 a.m. that morning.
What was the date?
So, December 30th of 2019. And so, given the, the timing and everything, it's, we're a little behind, obviously. We normally would have done this in an earlier meeting, but we couldn't get the notices and everything completed before that time. We have some pictures here. These are the pictures that were taken the day that the property was tagged and the notice was given. This is a lot that basically sits behind the old vacuum shop there on Main Street. Just for the record, the city had gone through and done a lot of cleaning in the area of 10th and Husband, which are also properties that Mr. Hayes owns. And a lot of this stuff that you're seeing is stuff that was actually brought over from there by Mr. Hayes in an effort to evade it being taken off by the code officers who were cleaning the property. And I mean, the slides are self-explanatory. I will tell you that the officer, James Moore, is here to answer any questions that you might have, but Mr. Moore is the one who has worked this particular case.
What is the code violation say? What is the condition of the property that violates the code?
You cannot have excess junk and debris and inoperable vehicles, things like that, that sit on the property. That's considered a nuisance under both state statute and under the city codes. And these, as you can see, all of this property and this stuff that's piled up back here, the bulk of it is, is junk. There are a couple of old vehicles and there's an old Airstream trailer. And just, just so you know how long some of that stuff has been there, the Airstream trailer and the two vehicles appear in photographs that we have of the property from a similar abatement proceeding in 2012. So not a lot of movement there. But the junk and stuff clearly is in violation of the code and our recommendation to the code officers was to pursue this abatement. So we think that the officer was correct in issuing the, the notice and we believe the city has the right to go in and clean the property.
When they clean the property, what happens to the items that are removed?
If they're junk, which most of it is, it's just hauled to the dump. And then an assessment is made as to the cost of the cleanup and that is turned into a lien and is placed against the property until it's, either we go and through, get a judgment against the property owner and enforce the lien, or the property sells and we collect the judgment when the property sells. Excuse me, collect the lien when the property sells.
And then what is the, the council at this point is asked to either deny or approve the appeal?
Yes. Mr. Hayes is here and obviously he's objected to this appeal. And so if, if you agree with Mr. Hayes, then the city will stop the abatement effort. If you disagree with Mr. Hayes, then the officers should be instructed to, to proceed forward with the abatement. And if Mr. Hayes has an issue with that, he can go try to seek an injunction or something in district court. But this would be his one and only appeal and he has had proper notice and an opportunity to be heard. So we've complied with all the statutory requirements by providing him this form tonight.
With the council, if the appeal was awarded, would there be a certain amount of time frame then that the council would allow Mr. Hayes to get rid of the junk or would just?
That's up to you. If you wanted to give him some additional time and then basically authorize staff, you could do that as well.
Well, so that, it sounds like we either uphold or don't uphold the, the ticket, basically, that he received on this property, right? I mean, that's what we're being asked to do. If, if we don't uphold it, then they would have to go back out and, and issue a different one at another time?
Well, they would go back. I mean, it, you're never, you don't get a jail, get out of jail free card because you get through the appeal process. We would have to restart the process and go through it again. But you certainly would, it is within your authority, and I do appreciate that question, to give him some additional time to get it cleaned up himself. But if he fails to do that, then the, then the manager's office through the code enforcement officers should be authorized to proceed with the abatement process.
Counselors, any further question for Mr. Dorman? Mr. Hayes? There he is. Would you like to present your appeal on, on this matter, please?
I've had three notices here in the last two, couple of months here. December 12th for 1001, 1005, 1009, South Husband. I'm sorry, November 12th. December 30th for 1012 South Main. And a lot of those pictures were from the Husband Street address. And then here's another one. 16 of 2000, which is my birthday. And, you know, I'm being overloaded with stuff to do. Three-fourths of it has been taken care of. You know, a lot of this stems from the city not taking responsibility for the on-call city electrician not coming out and turning off the electricity for almost two hours while my house burnt. And then the city, and by the way, when we had a meeting on that, it wasn't recorded. And on the fire reports, there's not, it's not timestamped when he showed up. And in my opinion, and from what I'm told, there is a serious problem, has been. This isn't just a one-time thing. I said in the command car, they called the on-call city electrician three times. So, and it's been three years, so there's, there's no surprise that, you know, I'm, I'm being bombarded with stuff that's completely out of my ability to manage. I have some notes here I would like to show y'all. But I've had, you know, I've been on, in a group of people going around trying to save other people's houses that are being scheduled for demolition. And I, I've seen some of y'all drive by. It'd be nice if y'all come out and swing a hammer sometimes. I know that you say this is tough doing this, but, uh, you know, it's tough being on the working, uh, working poor class. This latest one I didn't show you here, they want me to move the fence back along 10th Or I can have a four-foot fence. You know, the night of the fire, in my opinion, a confidential informant was over in my yard and I found needles in the yard. There's a series of these problems too. Some of these other people that's got in their houses condemned have been the same thing. Confidential informants are being sicced on us, basically. You know, all I'm asking, and all I asked was that someone, you know, addressed me. I've talked to everybody here in here and a couple of dozen other people. Nobody's addressed me about the on-call city electrician being able, something being done to where he's not going to fall back asleep and sometimes not show up at all. You know, I guess that's out of the suing range now. I'm not one to want to sue people. But I would like to be, you know, someone to give me some answers on that. And I'll, I'll tell you how you can go about finding out these houses that have been let burn, is you can go study all of the fire reports and the ones where they don't timestamp where the on-call electrician shows up. That's a good clue to look at that and, and do some investigation. I would, I would think it'd be the right thing for us to look at this. It may, it might cost us millions of dollars. But you just can't go around letting houses burn down and then come after people that say anything about it. You know, I would like to have three months to finish cleaning the last one-fourth of my properties up. You know, I'd like to have time to go to the doctor. You know, this could lead into cancer. It'd have been so much easier for someone to say, "Okay, we messed up. We shouldn't have called the on-call electrician three times to get the electricity turned off to where we could spray around the 220s." But I guess, you know, all I can do is, is try to keep carrying on, you know? And, you know, if I was given another three months, and it'd be nice if someone would address what I've brought up numerous times to everybody.
On the question of the property at 1010 Main, is the condition of the property, I mean, is, you mentioned that those, you don't think those pictures are of this property?
There's a lot of these pictures that are, are not of this property.
Is the, is the property at 1010 and 1012 Main, is it in this same, similar condition? Is there debris and, and this sort of junk lying around the yard?
Well, you know, I'm a, my grandpa had a auto salvage place. I guess they would call it a junkyard. I've got a flyer here. I should have made copies for everybody. But this says 32 years of operations at 1012 South Main. Well, I've been here 37 years. I do remodeling, appliance repair, automobile repair. You know, I do a lot of stuff and I've thrown away a thousand vacuum cleaners. But, you know...
They're not all in the yard though, right?
They're, they're not in the yards, no. I'm throwing them away now. It's a lot of brand-new stuff. You know, there's been tens of thousands of dollars that, yeah, there's been a lot of construction equipment to rebuild these properties there that's been thrown away. Luckily, some of them, they let me save some of it. So I should be able to, you know, get these places fixed up nice. But, uh, you know, I just need more time to clean up behind the store. And, uh, and I, you know, I know y'all are getting sued a lot and, and I guess that's, you know, I talked to Stan Ward that's come up here and sued y'all a lot of times and he told me pretty much, "Y'all turn down everything that anybody claimed anybody sends to you." You know, a police car ran into my parked van and trailer, did almost $500 worth of damage. I didn't get any money for that. You know, when I, I went to sell that house that y'all tore down, that the on-call electrician had to be called three times, almost took two hours to show up. I went to sell that and they said I had a thousand-square-foot basement. I know that's the county. This is a city. And I got to, I didn't get any of the money back on that, a hundred extra dollars a year. There's, you know, I, I got to studying up on that and they said that we were hiring overzealous government workers and I think there's overzealotness. You know, I'm trying to be honorable and be a good service to the community, but if you want any repair guys, you know, I'm trying to start a thing called Fix-It Cafe. They got like 1,100 of these around the, the world. You know, we need to address all this stuff going into the landfill. We need to look at the confidential informant system. You know, I, we could be training people to do this stuff. Nobody's learning this stuff. I, you know, maybe y'all don't believe in, the environment's in trouble, but, you know, I just basically need three more months to clean this up, to be given a chance to do this and, and, you know, go to the doctor in the meanwhile.
Okay. I understand that and I appreciate you coming and letting us know about the other issues. If there's other issues that, that you feel the city needs to address, I'd be happy to sit down with you at another time to talk about concerns there. If you want to send me an email, we can set up a time to, to sit and talk about your other concerns. On, on this matter, we do need to, to make a decision about what needs to happen here. It sounds like you would agree that it does need to be cleaned up. We just need to get you some more time to get it done yourself and before the city comes in to do it for you. I think that sounds reasonable. I would appreciate, you know, I do appreciate the fact that you've got other stuff going on and that, that you need to, some extra time to do it. I don't know if, I mean, it's, it's, it's not a huge area, so three months might, might be a bit of a, a long time to do it. But what do you think about the end of March? You have two months.
Well, you know, I'd like, it'd be nice to have three months and to actually come back and, you know, review it then. I mean, I'm not, you know, all I do is work, you know? I admit I took it, time off to see the Super Bowl, but...
That's a good game.
I, uh, but, you know, what's, what's three months? I mean, you know, I'm being realistic, you know?
Sure.
And, you know, we, we did a tremendous amount of stuff and, and I've got a, you know, you know, I wasn't able to work this whole time. You know, I had, you know, four and six people over there helping on, you know, James Moore said that, Officer Moore said that he was surprised at how much progress we'd got done. We, you know, I, I threw away six and a half roll-offs of stuff. I guess half of them was metal. But I should have been getting rid of my, I mean, I should have been moving my construction equipment and stuff. But, uh, you know, I, I don't know where they came up with 10 days to do this stuff, but, you know, I guess everyone else is doing that, eh?
Well, you know, it's a, the other issue here is that you, you also have neighbors and there's other people in the community that, that are affected by the condition of your property and, and it has an effect on other folks too. So we, we also have to consider the, the larger community on these kinds of decisions and the effect that it would have on them. So that, you know, that's where that comes into it. I don't, counselors, if there's any, you guys have any questions for Mr. Hayes at this point?
Well, I would just say, Rex, I think you hit on something earlier when you said you've got a lot on your plate right now and, and throwing this into the mix, you honestly, you have more important things to worry about. I mean, you, you've given us, I think, with this being in front of me, handing us your medical records, you've got things that you need to focus on that, that this cleanup actually may be secondary to that. So I do question your ability to take care of this right now. And I don't know that three months is something that's going to make a huge amount of difference in the long, in the long-term plan here. I would be curious to hear, do you, do you have a plan for getting this cleaned up?
Yeah, just working sunup to sundown and a lot of times later.
Right.
That's what I pretty much do every day. You know, I guess I hadn't worked enough, you know? You know, this city needs a recycle center, you know?
Sure.
My son's in Portland, Oregon. They recycle 80%. You know, I think we, someone said we recycle 10% here.
Well, again, there's some issue here too, that some of this stuff has been there for a long time. This is not, these, some of this stuff is not new even from your other properties. And with your ongoing health issues right now, my concern would be that, that you need to focus on those things and maybe let somebody step in and help you clean this stuff up.
Well, I, excuse me for interrupting, but I, I presented this medical stuff to Dennis and, and some of the other people in the city and, uh, I guess, you know, the complainers are ruling the day. I mean, you know, you can get, I can get things done and, you know, in three months I can get this done, but, you know, the city's, you know, if they want to, if they want to help out, they can clean their own house and, and give me time to clean mine. You know, I've been here 37 years and, uh, I don't know what, you know, maybe we need to try to get the American Civil Liberties in here or something, but, uh, you know, I, and I've talked to all of y'all except for the new, maybe the new, I think, no, I've talked to all of y'all about the, uh, the on-call city electrician. I know that in this case here, but nobody's gotten back with me. You know, why'd I got to come down here and... You know, why'd I gotta come down here and? Say Beetlejuice three times or something to get something done? I mean. It doesn't take a. You know. There was clearly some blame. If the guy's falling asleep and they can't fight the fire and it's happened to numerous people and this is a lot of, you know, my issues. Yeah, I've got too much stuff and I'm throwing it away. You know, we've, we've, we've taken. I don't know. Maybe thirty roll-offs out of here altogether. And there's probably. You know, half a dozen more, but it can get done. I just need the time and, and. Y'all do the right thing and allow me to do the right thing. I've, I've had an awful lot of. Of things that not right has been done to me and. I'd like to be given the time to, to at least do my part in trying to make things right and I, you know, I, I wish someone would stand up and do the right thing and. Address some of these other things that we don't seem to wanna. Take responsible for, ability for, but. Yeah. Well, maybe meet me halfway, say two and a half months.
Okay. Well, is there, is there any other information that we should have about this property or the condition of the property? Is there anything that, that you need to? They haven't told us yet about specifically the property on Main that we should know?
I don't know. Maybe. It's just a matter of, you know. I had to start working again, you know, and. You know, I'm working whether I'm sick or not. You know, I went, I went to a urologist and he told me to just keep, go back to work. Now, as far as the. The, the nuclear scan, I don't know what's going on with that yet. The, you know, I've got an Indian. Card and they're not a. They said they're not getting their money like they're supposed to, so. I, I've got, I, I just turned sixty-five, so I, I can go ahead and get my Medicare stuff. I'm sorry.
Is it that you're sorting through as you go and you'd like the time to sort?
Yeah.
Through to make sure that you're throwing things that need to be?
That's right.
Thrown away and keeping things that are of value?
Right.
To you still?
Well, about three-fourths of even the stuff that is valuable is getting thrown away anyhow because of. You know, the, the. Space. The firemen told me they need to go be able to walk through their shoulder to shoulder, but.
And those are all important things, as I think the mayor was mentioning, right, that we.
Yeah.
Are keeping our community and keeping that structure safe if there were to be an emergency and it must be overwhelming for you to. To look at this task ahead.
Well, it's all, most of it's done, you know? Three-fourths of it. I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, you're okay. Do we, perhaps, can I make, I don't know, do we make a motion here? Can we? Give Mr. Hayes some additional time to do some cleaning?
Well, I think we'd all agree that, you know, additional time may be warranted here. The question is.
How much?
How much?
And at the end of that timeframe, the decision will be final.
Right.
I mean, I.
No extension.
I want to honor, I, Mr. Hayes, you and I have talked and I, I understand. It's got to be one of the hardest things and overwhelming to, to go through that, but I also want to be fair for what this council's trying to do as far as protecting you. As property owners and others that are around you and ensuring that it is a safe environment and that. What we decide for you is fair for everybody else that comes up and needs to have an extension or an appeal. And I wanna make sure that we're being fair and honest to everybody that's, that's part of this process, so. I certainly am in agreement that we can. Extend time. But I think after that, then we stand our, you know, stand by our decision. Go from there.
So. Does, does anyone have a suggestion on time?
Rex, how much time do you need?
Three months. I mean, I've been here thirty-seven years. I mean.
So you would, you would be agreeable to. Three months and whatever is left or if it's not taken care of, then, then that, that's it?
That's fine. If I, if I die, just put me in a glad bag and chuck me on the curb. Don't make no big fuss out of me. I'm just kidding.
So the, the, I think the motion here would then be to, to. Uphold the order. But to extend the date to which, by which the abatement must be accomplished to April thirtieth? April third?
Well, that would be two.
February, all of March. Oh, that's just two.
Yeah.
April thirty.
April thirty.
April thirty.
So I'll, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second to uphold the, the order and to extend the. Date to April thirty, twenty twenty. Is, please vote. With a vote of four to one. With. Someone voting against, but there it is, with Elaine Zanotti voting against, that motion's approved. So, Mr. Hayes, you'll have until April thirtieth to get that cleaned up. Before the city will come in and, and abate it.
Okay.
We appreciate you being here. We certainly appreciate the efforts you're making, but we're also, you know, hopeful that we can get this, this property cleaned up.
It will be.
Thanks, sir.
Rex, focus on your health too.
Yeah.
You want those back?
No, no.
We'll give these back.
We'll give them back to you.
One of those for the record?
We probably need to keep one for the record.
Thank you, Rex.
I made some notes on one page.
Thank y'all very much.
Sorry about everything. We'll make it right.
Have a good evening. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item seven B, general orders to approve the purchase of two vehicles for utility billing service meter reading division and the associated budget amendment. Twenty, the CC dash twenty dash eighteen. Dana Maddox, how are you tonight?
I'm good. How are you?
Good.
I'm Dana Maddox, utility and billing services director here tonight, requesting your approval to purchase two vehicles for our utility and billing services division. We've been running about three vehicles short. We've been able to secure a vehicle from another department that they no longer needed. And have. Utilized these, one of the vehicles from the city fleet at City Hall on a regular basis. We do have some funding that's, has come in from. Return of our, what we call our ERTs. There are electronic meter reading devices that have been failing and that company no longer can provide replacements or repair of those. So those are the devices on our water meters that report in. The hourly and daily reading that we're now manually reading. So our meters themselves are still functioning accurately. We're just no longer able to. Get those readings via the network. So we're manually going out and having to pop those lids and get readings on those. So we're asking to spend some of that money. Cause we've had to bring on some additional staff to be able to keep up with reading those meters. So. The report does have the wrong amount in it. It said ninety-eight thousand, six hundred. It's really fifty-three thousand, nine twenty-six that we're asking to be moved. That money over to buy those vehicles.
Moving it from the, from the refunds?
Yes.
To, to purchase the vehicles?
Yes.
Is there a plan for replacing or changing, you know, fixing the meter problem?
Yes. Currently, we're looking at a Clara who, we're waiting on the contract to be signed to. Replace all of our electronic reading devices on our water and put in AMI electric meters. So. Right now, that's probably once contract is signed, about an eighteen-month project. Once we get that rolling.
How long have the Itron ones been in place?
Ten years. So the warranty on those is coming up quickly, so we're trying to get as many of the failing ones out of the ground and return so we can get. Some money back on those. So to date, we've. We started sending them back in September of twenty eighteen when they notified us that they would no longer replace or repair them and to date, we've collected. A refund of about two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand.
Okay. Good. Counselors, any further questions?
Motion to approve the purchase of two vehicles for the utility and billing services meter reading division and the budget amendment appropriating the funds.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve this purchase. Please vote. That item's approved by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Dana. Item seven C, authorize staff to continue utilizing Meridian Technology Center for future training needs in the current fiscal year with the available budgeted funds, CC dash twenty dash twenty-two. Hello, Kristy.
Hello, good evening. Kristy Looper, Human Resources Director. We currently partner with Meridian Technology to provide a variety of training opportunities across the city for our employees. At this time, when we plan out our calendar for the remainder of this fiscal year, we have the opportunity to potentially exceed the fifty-thousand-dollar limit. Therefore, we are asking your approval to continue planning those and if we exceed, allow us authorization to do so. Funds are currently available and budgeted from our training fund. Happy to answer any questions.
The issue here is not that you don't have the budget. It's just that it's over the fifty-thousand-dollar administrative limit for you all to spend.
Exactly.
Okay. Questions, councilors? I assume we're very happy with the service we provide, we receive.
We are very happy with the service we provide, we receive. It is a very good partnership.
Agreed.
Yep. I agree too.
Motion to authorize staff to continue utilizing Meridian Technology Center for future training needs.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve this item. Please vote.
Thank you.
With a vote of four to zero with one abstention, that item is approved. Counselor Zanotti was the abstention. That takes us to item seven D, follow-up report on the Mary Main Street event. Counselor Zanotti and Shannon Williams will give us that report.
Good evening. Counselors, Zanotti and I are going to be doing the wrap-up for Mary Main Street. And to begin with, we have a little PowerPoint presentation for all of you. As you can see, here's kind of what we started with and our purpose was to create a vibrant holiday downtown event. That included people of all backgrounds and ages. Elaine will go over some of our budget and what we started with and where we're going from there.
It's hard to believe. I think it was actually a year ago that Shannon approached both Mayor Joyce and I about what they were doing in Oklahoma City and Midtown as far as during the holiday times. And this was the four weekends between Thanksgiving and Christmas where they actually set up an empty block. Put retail domes on it and activities and it was a way to generate sales tax and, and just this holiday vibrant feeling. So. Shannon came to, to the mayor and I and so we, we met and then last May, we came to the council to see what funding would be available for us to. Partner with the city of Stillwater as well as other entities around town. And so I wanted to just kind of remind everyone, we wanted to show you what stewards we were of the money and kind of what Mary Main Street did. So. To remind you, the total funds that were available were around one-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand dollars. That, that beginning cash balance from the city of Stillwater was a hundred-and-twenty-eight. That was a combination of two funds, a contingency monies from the city of Stillwater as well as a balance that was left from the Arts and Humanities Fund. Shannon and I had raised donations of around sixteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars and this consisted of dome sponsorships at twenty-five hundred. There were five of them. And other sponsorship levels that provided the music that happened, the lighting, and then there's certain activities that we'll, we'll report on later on in the, in the report. We also had each vendor that was part of Mary Main Street and the domes. They had a vendor fee of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. We had twenty-one vendors, so it was, that number is forty-eight fifty. And then we also created Mary Main Sheet, Mary Main Street T-shirts and the sale of those T-shirts combined that. So we had a total of a hundred-and-fifty-one thousand funds coming in. So the total use of funds was a hundred-and-eight thousand and part of what was underneath that was the security of labor. One of the things we partnered with was the city of Stillwater and our utility works department. We had two staff per evening the night that Mary Main Street happened, which was Thursday through Saturday night. To sit overnight and kind of make sure, ensure that things were safe. And if anything happened with the domes due to weather or anything like that, we had people there. They were fabulous. It was a way for them to earn extra money during the holidays themselves and they were fabulous to work with. We also had banners made. Shannon and I were very deliberate about ensuring that maybe there were some one-time costs that would happen with Mary Main Street, so we wouldn't. Have to continually come back to the council or to other entities to, to help pay for those things. So banners that were made for Mary Main Street that were hung up around town can be used again. I think we hit every resale shop possible for holiday decor. Anyone had a Christmas tree, we wanted it, anything like that. We also have rentals. We want to ensure that what we did purchase for Mary Main Street is housed in a secure area. So we do have some rental units that we're putting that in. Advertising, contracts of service, such as the city of Stillwater staff being able to come out and actually, I think, one weekend, we had a door that blew open that we had to have that taken care of. So wanted to ensure that we had monies. Available for those types of things that happened. It was a special event. The geodesic domes, of course, was a, an expense. Insurance for the event. Food and minor supplies and those things included the cookies with cops, those cookies that were utilized for that event as well as minor supplies. We needed to have some ramps built for the dome so that it was accessible for anyone to, to be a part of that. So we met with the finance, city of Stillwater Finance Department. We have a current balance in the account for Mary Main Street at forty-two thousand. Like I said before, the one-time expenses were the geodesic domes at ninety-eight thousand and the banners at, at twenty-six sixty-four. So there's a huge chunk of the budget from this year that we will not have to utilize for next year. We're very fortunate on that. The good news is from Midtown, I think they're doing their ninth year with their domes. So we're looking at a good, I think, return on the city investment for that. We have been asked as far as utilizing the domes for other activities and I think at this point, we're pretty comfortable in saying that if it's a city activity, we're happy to do that. Because we have invested in these domes and there's a certain way to put it together and a certain way to take care of it, we want to ensure the longevity of those domes. So they will not be just up for rent, but we certainly want to look at other citywide activities so that the city feels that they've gotten good use from those domes. Our overall goal is to always have money left over for the next Mary Main Street event, so we are planning for twenty twenty, but we wanted to give you an idea of kind of some things that happened. Along the way this year.
So here you can see our domes being put together and of course, that was done with city staff. And some pictures along the way. Again, some lit up at night. This was a great opportunity for people, mainly vendors who don't have a brick and mortar or those from out of town to try their hand. At having a downtown retail or restaurant. And here's how some of, I know I've seen most of you guys there, so you guys, thank you for coming out. But here are some ways that they were decorated on the inside. Each of them were unique. I'll go through those. But we had some great feedback from our vendors and we will go over that here in a little while. But you can see, this one is actually from Oklahoma City. He did really well. And part of our planning for it is we had a vendor information meeting. We had a total of twenty-one vendors and that was some of them sharing a dome. Each weekend they rotated, so there was always something new to see. Again, for the initial. Initial event, we just did a very low two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar dome fee with the response that we had from our vendors saying that some of them, it was the best weekend they had. Overall, like for the entire month, they did better in our weekend here than they do in a month. Elaine and I are planning to up the fee a little bit, not too crazy, but. Just so we have something to grow on. We did this year have more vendors than we had domes. So that was a good sign. And I've already had people asking when the applications are out for next year. But there you can see all of our vendors in our meeting and they were given packets and instructions. Variety of businesses, like we mentioned, combination of in-town and out-of-town and a few online businesses. And I know Elaine and I have already had several meetings since then. And one of our hopes, again, with Quint Stuter coming into Stillwater was that we would love for this to be. A trial event for these businesses to come in and then we follow up with them. So we don't just do a Christmas event. They come in and they have their retail weekend and then we send out a letter or the chamber sets out a letter or visits Stillwater and says. Thanks for coming to Stillwater. This is all the things that we have to offer. Here are all of our vacancies in downtown. Click on this link to see if you would like to rent one. So that is our hope, that this just keeps growing and growing and we get a lot more exposure.
I'll let Elaine take this.
All right. Because this was the first year. Because this was the first year, we had to be mindful about the kind of numbers we wanted to look at and so we did do a survey for our vendors to get some feedback. What day was their busiest day of the weekend? What did they sell the most? What were their sales like? What time of day? We wanted to make sure that the hours fit. The nuance about Mary Main Street is that each weekend has a different event occurring in it. The first weekend is Black Friday, the second weekend, you've got the Downtown Christmas Parade and Downtown Stillwater kind of kicking off their holiday time. The third weekend, we have Oklahoma State University graduation and then Sunday, it's that weekend before Christmas. So it was interesting to read the results back on, on what was happening. What I can tell you is that we had two vendors that were online only and because they participate here in this Mary Main Street, Twisted Horn and Oklahoma America, both of them had sales that were greater than what they did in one month, online sales. And to them, it sparked the idea of maybe doing bricks and mortar because they actually had their product out in front of people, which is part of what Shannon and I were hoping would happen. It also helps them, people go back online, look at their, their merchandise, they, they felt it, they've touched it, they've done that sort of thing. We did have one vendor also comment on the fact that on a Saturday afternoon, just their credit card sales alone were over $3,000. We had an average sale for the weekend between 11,500 and 15,700, so these domes did very well. We did do a variety of domes, we had a bakery, we had a toy store, we had women's boutique, we had in... Men's clothing. Oh, men's clothing, yeah, women's men's trading. We had a good variety of in-town and out-of-town. The OSU Student Store was excited to get out and actually be downtown, they had a very successful weekend themselves. Weather played a great part of it. I was disappointed Shannon, not so much, I was hoping it would snow. But I can tell you that that magical night of the Christmas downtown parade on that Thursday night was one of the best moments for Mary Main Street. Weather does play a part of it, but I think what the community also showed us was even on weather that wasn't so great, people still came out. One of the things we're going to do next year is have them keep a better tally of actually people that were coming in their domes. Robin Davies, who does the Furniture Showcase, was in our fifth dome, the Hospitality Dome, which we'll talk about here in a minute. And she actually did keep track of people coming in and she said by that Thursday night and on good weather days, she lost, she lost count. She said it just got to be too many people and it was too hard to keep track of. So there certainly was people coming in. Just to kind of give you a quick view and then we'll go back to what worked well. Roundhouse Bakery sold 647 cupcakes, 280 macarons. They sold 80 each of lemon lavender shortbread cookies, maple marshmallows, chewy gingerbread, 86 scones, 42 muffins, 232 cinnamon rolls and 100 baked donuts, seven cakes and four sheet cakes. Just in one weekend, so.
Most of that was to me.
And she said, she actually said that next year, she's not going to plan any, if she gets chosen, she's not going to plan any weddings and she will just focus on our event because she did so well.
So we're going to kind of go back and forth on what worked well and go over this quickly.
Okay, so what surprised Elaine and I is we had all these little vignettes of areas for people to take photos, you know Instagram is big. And people were out there day and night, taking family photos, making them their Christmas card, we even had somebody take their dog photo out there. And so we would like to incorporate that again next year and even maybe make it a little bit different, change it up. Again, thank you to Prairie Arts for doing our Instagram photo background for this, this was a huge hit as well. Again, more, that was a recycled sled from past Christmas parades, if you didn't recognize it. Also, this was our event dome, I, this is what I feel like really set us apart from any other event that used these geodesic domes for their holiday events. Our events were spectacular. Every, I had people calling me day and night, emailing me, trying to get tickets for this. I know next year, we have some ideas for this, but it was really a highlight of our total event. We had, Amy did, our counselor, Deloski did our chocolate painting trees here. We had flower arranging, charcuterie board class and also a cocktail, Christmas cocktail class as well.
And Representative Trish Ranson held a Young Professionals Coffee also in there. So we have found that I think Stillwater looks forward to having something, we're thinking for next year, this Hospitality Dome can, can have even more activities and more things happening to, to get people downtown.
Also, we did, we tried to do some community events on Saturdays. The Cookies with Cops, the Smores with Firemen did, I was just blown away at the amount of people who rolled out for that event. So that is definitely something we want to incorporate next year. And here we did the ukulele, our stage up there was a hit, we had people just taking pictures in front of the stage when nothing was going on. And so I thought we did really well with what we had. Our carriage rides were always full, had a line for that, so that is something we also want to try to incorporate. Our Tree Farm was a hit. I know Taylor Diesel is already committed to be in a, part of it next year and I'm so thankful for that. He has, he did a lot of work for us this year and really, I couldn't thank him enough for everything that he did, but everyone was taking pictures, again with his Tree Farm and really coming out and supporting him and his new business.
My family's Christmas card photo was at the Tree Farm. That was where. It wasn't planned and it was just candid.
I think one of the things that we're waiting on is, sales tax is always two months behind, so we don't have sales tax figures yet. We're, we're positive based on what the vendors are telling us they made on their domes, we're hoping this did really make an impact on sales tax. Some of the ideas for Mary Main Street, we got from vendors as well as the public. I think next year, we'll probably, like I said, this year was really about trying to get it off its feet and trying to make people realize what it was. The second year, we really want to focus a lot more on ensuring that these events make sense, that we actually have some registration. For the, all the events we had in the Hospitality Dome, we did it just kind of on good word of mouth and so this year, we want to make sure we have a registration and people pay ahead of time. For the most part, they all sold out and people showed up, but we still want to kind of tighten that up a little bit. We're going to see if events expand and need to include different hours. We had some times where there was kind of a lull and there might be some opportunity for things to happen on the stage, whether it be some extra caroling or some other things going on. Layout of Block 34 to change, one of the things that we had feedback on was just because this year was worked on getting all of the power outlets. The domes have to be in a certain location in order to, to support the power that they need for all their lights and decor and so we'd like to think about a different layout maybe for next year and see if there's a possibility for some more power to be in some other areas on Block 34. Not only for Mary Main Street, but it just goes to show that when we do have a lot of people that do attend on Block 34, there are some areas that can be used, that weren't able to be used because we didn't have power opportunities. More lighting, one of the things that Shannon and I, even though we thought it was a cute Hallmark ambiance, we do need some more lighting because when it got dark, it, it did get dark and was kind of hard to see, so doing some more lighting. We also, we were so appreciative of the food trucks that did come and be a part of that, a big shout-out to Dee's BBQ, Macarena, Mexican and, and Tangorang Coffee. We have found that this is not an event that necessarily needs five or six different food trucks, we want to be mindful and maybe have a different one or two food trucks per weekend based on what's going on and looking at the hours. I know the vendors appreciated having the food trucks there because they couldn't step away from their domes. All these logistical things that happen when you haven't done it before, you figure it out this first year, but being more mindful and maybe having a more designated eating area so that people can actually sit down and have maybe a covered area so to speak or something that's designated a little bit more for that. Iron Monk was generous in as far as being, as creating a beer garden, but once again, having more of a designated area for that would be important. We worked with an OSU marketing class that was amazing for us. They created our website for us this first year, they helped us with our Instagram, they helped us with our Facebook. This year, we really want to work with them more on tracking the data and doing some surveys and kind of taking that extra step above to kind of figure out if what we're doing makes sense. Are we reading, are we reaching everybody that we need to be reaching? Is this really reaching out to where we, where we need to go? We've had people tell us, "Please get an eye scan and a rink" or something like that. We're looking into other children's events that will keep people there longer. It's a big block and I think it has the opportunity for growth and so I think there's, there's definitely possibilities for other things to happen to keep people on, so we're looking forward to kind of planning those things out for the next year. And I think both Shannon and I just want to say thank you to the city council and thank you to the City of Stillwater. It's two girls that had a passion for trying to make something different in the holidays for Stillwater and the community embraced it, our vendors embraced it. We could not have done it without the City of Stillwater, without Visit Stillwater, without Prairie Arts Center, without the library, without all these entities that helped us bring this together, the, the Chamber, so we want to give a shout-out to them and say thank you and we'll open it up for questions.
Excellent, thank you guys. What, um, what was the executive director salaries that you guys took for this?
Zero dollars. And some donations.
First off, thank you guys so much for the effort that you put into this and I knew it was a volunteered thing and it was a passion thing for you guys, it was something that you, you felt strongly could happen and remember when you first brought this up, a year ago. And it sounded like a great idea, but it also sounded like it was going to be a ton of work. And I have no doubt that it was a ton of work and just very, very appreciative that you guys were willing to do that and put the, the time and effort in because the weekends that my family went down, it was fantastic, we loved it. I heard nothing but positive feedback from everybody who was down there. It, it was a, it was a hit for sure and, and due in large part to you two putting in the time and effort and resources to make it happen, so thank you guys very much. Councilors?
So did I, did I see the figures right? So your, your capital expenditures, now that those are out of the way, you have $42,000 in the bank, your operating expenses for this whole thing was about 10 grand? It's 98,000 for the domes, I think, and you spent a total of 108,000.
Yeah, we were probably at, yeah, one...
So you've got enough money in there to do it four more years without taking anything else in.
Well, I think, I think that money can, what we see is certainly is for Mary Main Street, but I hope it can, I hope other city events get excited about being able to do some things on Block 34 or downtown or something that will help keep that going. So as much as Shannon and I would, you know, would love for it all to be Mary Main Street, I think as we continue to develop this and see really what needs, what expenses there comes with this, there might be some other activities that can happen.
There's a good cushion there though.
Yeah, well, and we plan on, you know, having, now that people know what it is, hopefully this helps with our sponsorships too because it's difficult the first year to be like, "Oh hey, donate, you know, to this." And nobody's ever seen it before, so.
I had a great time and as Will said, I did not hear anything except great weekends, great, great events. I did several of the hospitality nights or two, I can't remember now. They were really fun, really nice and totally different than anything that I have done on Block 34 or in Stillwater or anyplace.
Great, good.
Nice. And I was amazed, every time I was there, you were there. That was a lot of time.
Yeah, Shannon was teasing me, I think it was the first weekend, we were just very diligent about trying to be there every hour, not that we weren't the other weekends, but I think it's, I'm going to tease, it's kind of like having your fourth child, by the fourth weekend, we're like, "Here's your key." The weather's great, but we really could not have done it. I, I just have to give a shout-out to the public work staff at the City of Stillwater, they really ensured that these domes were the best possible thing that could be for the vendors. It's not a heated store, I mean, it's, it's a dome that certainly protected you from the weather and it's not just a tent, but there were some windy days and there were some chilly days and some beautiful days and they just ensured that the experience that each vendor had in that dome was what it needed to be and so I just can't thank them enough.
It was really magical, you guys. I mean, it really was and it was, it was so neat to go and see our community embrace it and to get excited about it, to get excited to go back the next week because it was this changing format every week, new stores to visit, new activities to participate in and we had so many friends that, that loved it. We had so many people remark at, you know, just this opportunity to build community around the holidays and what a special chance that was here in Stillwater. So thank you for your hard work because we know it was hard work.
Well, we have a, we currently have a student, an OSU student who is doing some work for the wrap-up here and is going to be doing a survey for downtown merchants. I know personally, my mom, you know, was at the store and I was at Mary Main Street, so she had people come down to the shop that she hadn't seen in years and she said, "Oh, what are you guys doing here? Have you been down to Mary Main Street?" And they said, "That's why we came down here." And then they decided to shop and Main Street. And so that was our goal too, is to bring people down there. And hopefully, you know, we'll have more feedback for that as well.
Well, and I do a shout-out, otherwise this will, this will take 30 minutes and you guys, we didn't put a lot of pictures in here, I don't think it's, it's been a long time since I've seen all of the downtown merchants' windows decorated as much as they were this year, so a shout-out to the downtown merchants who really were excited about trying something new and were supportive of Shannon and I in this Mary Main Street and decorated their windows and, you know, greeted us with a smile and, and I think the calendars and the events, I think helped, that we had a map that had every downtown merchant that wanted to be a part of, of the Mary Main Street on one side and on the backside, we had the list of events that occurred between the four weeks that Mary Main Street happened and so it had everything from what's happening at the community center to if stores were having any types of sales or specials. And they said that helped because they actually had people come in and, and the vendors in the domes pass them out as well as the downtown merchants. So I think that was a good way to create a partnership.
Since you mentioned Main Street, I would also like to thank Pro Value.
Yes.
For that.
Please do that again.
For a couple of days, people were saying thanks to, to the city and I'm like, "We'll take it, but we didn't do it."
Pat said, "You're welcome."
At first I did.
Drew Breveridge did a wonderful job putting that tree up and then also providing our wifi on Block 34, so a big shout-out to Pro Value for that.
And that's the thing that we're going to work on too, is trying to still connect, make that connection for next year and just build on that. Like I said, this year, we were just trying to get everything off the ground, but then now we can work on those details. But yeah, it was great so far, so far so good.
Excellent.
Good job, guys.
Thank you guys so much for the report. Thank you.
I'm wondering, you know, we were, had planned to level Block 34 before Mary Main Street this year, will, will it be done for next year?
Starts next week.
Good.
They're going to start breaking concrete.
Wonderful.
Excellent, that takes us down to item eight, ordinances. On first read, we have ordinance 3448, an ordinance rezoning property addressed to 1798 North Payne Street from RT two-family residential district to RSS small lot, single-family residential district. This is the ordinance for the zoning action we had last meeting, is there a motion?
I have a few questions that are kind of related to this event, event as in rezoning. It's not exactly to this ordinance, but I've had tons of emails about Skyline East and I, I know that there's nobody here asking about Skyline East, but they're watching on TV. So I would like for them, I had to ask Paula a number of questions to just get this straight in my mind and I'd like to make sure that everybody hears the questions and the answers. Is that okay?
Proceed.
You know, I, I was wondering if there was someplace else in Stillwater that had a similar density to what has been proposed in the Skyline East area? And actually, there are one, two, three, four, five, eight, seven, seven other areas. And if you call me, I'll be happy to tell you what they are, but they're all the small lot areas. So that was interesting to me that that would, that there are places that you can go look at. A question that I didn't ask Paula was how much, you know, this is not just a neighborhood. It's an area of where two schools are located, so it's not just any neighborhood. What has been the conversation with the school district about this area? Sorry Paula, I should have put that in the email this morning, but...
That's okay and I am actually not sure what conversations have been, if there have been any conversations, but I'll definitely follow up on that and, and get back with you tomorrow.
So, I don't, I think these are good questions. I'm not sure we want to get into this much detail about the development and that on this zoning issue. I'm not sure that it's, I think we might be getting a little far off the agenda.
Are we far off?
You're starting to push the limits.
Oh, when do I get to ask these questions?
Well, that, that item will be up before Planning Commission tomorrow, correct? And then if it comes to us, it would be the next meeting we have or will it be in March?
It doesn't...
It will be when the final plat is, is presented to you for acceptance of the dedication, which could be several weeks.
If not months.
If not months, yeah.
John, will you just walk through that process really quick, what it is? Like so, so right now, we have a rezone in front of us, in front of us as city council.
Yes.
Because we have, we've gotten a lot of correspondence from the neighborhood and it's, I think it just is important just to kind of air out what the process is maybe out loud, so.
The rezoning you approved last meeting and so tonight is the first reading of the ordinance that adopts the rezoning. If you pass, if you go, if you pass this... ordinance that adopts the rezoning. If you pass, if you go, if you pass this the second reading tonight, then it would reappear on the agenda next week for second reading. And if it passes the second reading, then the ordinance would be published and then in thirty days would go into effect. The item that's on the agenda tomorrow night is a preliminary plat that is for this, this development. And under the code, the Planning Commission actually has jurisdiction over the preliminary plat and the final plats. You will not see the preliminary plat. The preliminary plat will be reviewed by the Planning Commission. It will make recommendations with respect to things that need to be on it, the traffic study, things like that will all be items that the Planning Commission will take a look at tomorrow evening when it decides whether or not to accept the plat. And then once the, the preliminary plat is, is aired out in front of the Planning Commission, then it goes back to the developer and they make the necessary adjustments to the, to the plat to address the questions that were raised at the meeting and the, whatever the council, or excuse me, whatever the Planning Commission deems is necessary to get the plat into proper form for a final plat. And when it goes back to the Planning Commission, then the Planning Commission will review the final plat. The final plat is approved, then it comes to the City Council, and you don't actually approve the final plat. What you do is you accept the dedications of the public ways and easements, things of that nature, the streets, the utility easements, the drainage facilities, things like that that would become public improvements. And assuming that all of those meet the code requirements, then those are, then you would accept those. And that's effectively the end of the process at that point.
Is there, is there discretion for the council at the time of the final plat approval of the dedication of the easements?
If you decide that, that you don't think that one of the easements or one of the public facilities that's being tendered to you meets the code or meets with your approval, then you, it's within your right to deny, to refuse to accept the public conveyances. And if you do that, then it would, I assume would go back to the Planning Commission and you would restart that process, or they would make, you could make recommendations as to how that should be adjusted and send it back. But you do always have the final say as to whether or not those are, things are accepted.
Will you just clarify really, because I am hoping that that just kind of clarifies the process, right? This would be a challenging thing if you're a neighbor in this neighborhood wanting to understand kind of who do I talk to, who do I speak to, how do I get questions answered, you know, all of those things. So, we're kind of using jargon a little bit. But what is a, can you just explain what a plat is as, as it's going to Planning Commission?
A plat is the document that actually subdivides the property into lots and blocks so that they can be marketed by the developer and, and sold to individuals to build homes on. And so, that's the first, in, in the context of creating the plat, you address things like stormwater, traffic, locations of streets, locations of easements, all of those kinds of things. And so, that's what this process is about tomorrow night, is to actually address those items. The, the Planning Commission would be looking into the, the very things that I think are of concern to the neighborhood.
So, our response, or at least my response today, as I've answered emails, has been to, to join the Planning Commission tomorrow for that discussion and bring their questions and concerns at that point, which is appropriate, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And the Planning Commission will be aware of all of those issues that were raised that we've been made aware of.
Thank you.
I, I'm glad that we covered the general topic there of, of the thing. But that, I mean, that is an issue before the Planning Commission and not before the council. And so, our, our agenda is to either advance or not advance ordinance thirty-four forty-eight to second reading. Are there further questions or comments about the ordinance or a motion?
Motion to advance ordinance three, four, four, eight to second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance the ordinance to second read. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the ordinance is advanced to second reading. Item nine, reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman.
Request for an executive session pursuant to twenty-five OS subsection three oh seven B one for the purpose of confidential communication regarding the employment, appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of Stillwater City Manager Norman McNichol and Stillwater City Attorney John Dorman.
Thanks, sir. Mr. McNichol.
Two quick items, Mayor. That are great employees. I'd like to recognize city employee Teigen Greenfield for exhibiting the city's standards in action recently. While Teigen was sitting in an intersection, he saw a woman fall on the sidewalk. He immediately pulled aside to help the woman. And the Stillwater Fire Department recently named Stephen Marshall the twenty nineteen firefighter EMT of the year. We'd like to congratulate Stephen on his recognition and thank both he and Teigen for his, for their service to the community.
Excellent. Thank you. Councillors, and I?
I do not. I, Norman McNichol and I had the same thing, so we're good. So, ditto.
Ditto, my man.
No, you're fine.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, the time is coming up when you, everyone will be able to say you've got mail. You will have a postcard in the mail in the coming months, which will, you will use to complete the twenty-twenty census. And you have already heard from this area how important that census is. If you have any questions or need help, the Stillwater Public Library has the equipment and staff to make sure you get counted, and that is census central. Stillwater Public Library.
Excellent. Thank you. Councillor Wedlock?
Yes, thank you, sir. The Stillwater Police Department celebrated their newest recruit officers in an oath of office and penning ceremony last Thursday. Congratulations and welcome to Officers Damian Nieswanger and Officer Laura Delon. I hope I pronounced those somewhat correctly. This Thursday at two PM, police will be holding a ceremony to promote two officers right here in this room. The public is invited to attend. More details are available at stillwater.org.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Jaloski?
Yes. Rain barrels are now on sale for pickup through the city of Stillwater. These barrels capture water from roofs for future use, which could save you money on your water bill while being environmentally friendly. Go to stillwater.org/news for details on how to order your barrel.
Those are cool. There's an example out in the lobby of the rain barrel.
They are very cool. You can water your flowers and all kinds of stuff.
When, this past week, the mayor of Cameoqua, our sister city, came down to, to visit us in Stillwater, and we took him on a tour, councillor, councillor, Mr. McNichol and I walked them around. They, they stopped specifically at the rain barrel and were excited about it and said that they did the same thing. And they asked us how much we paid for them, and we said, well, the city, the public has to buy them, but they're sixty-five dollars.
Think around that, sixty to seventy dollars, I think.
And they were shocked, because he said, I think they said something like three or four hundred dollars to buy one of those-
Wow.
-in Cameoqua. So, the government subsidizes it to some extent. But, yeah, so anyway, they liked our rain barrels.
Yeah.
All right. I have an announcement about city committees and boards, which actually kind of ties into the next item on the agenda, which is appointments. If you are interested in getting more involved in the community, the city of Stillwater does have vacancies on the Audit Committee, the Board of Adjustment, and more. And tonight, we have appointments under item eleven, the Airport Authority, Public Housing Authority, and the Citizens Transportation Projects Committee. I am actually going to ask to table the Airport Authority and Public Housing Authority appointments to have a little more time to, for me to go through folks who have applied for those, and also to make sure that we've gotten good announcements out there about them. You know, we have a number of folks on, on some of these committees that have served multiple terms, three, four, or five terms, which is fantastic. We love that people are willing to continue to serve. But we also want to make sure that people understand what's out there, what's available for them to serve in as well, and, and make sure we're getting enough, you know, folks interested and, and aware of those things. So, I do want to table those two, the Airport Authority and the Public Housing Authority, for now. On the Citizen Transportation Projects Committee, that's a, a task force that we've been promoting quite a bit over the last few weeks, and we actually had eighteen applications come in for, for that committee. And this is the Transportation Committee that the staff requested to help vet three specific projects that are upcoming, the Husband Street Bike Quarter, which Mr. Carpenter was here speaking about earlier, the new fifty-one widening project, the fifty-one corridor project that ODOT will be undertaking here in the next couple of years, and then also Sanger Road from twenty-six to six, which is a, a very high-traffic area around schools in that area that, that we want to take an extra look at. So, I'm very excited that, that we had eighteen folks apply to be part of this committee. Some of them are interested in maybe one of those projects, or two of those projects, or all three of those projects. And I think this would be a good opportunity for everyone to get together at the beginning and kind of figure out where they want to focus and which project they're, they're most interested on, if, if it's one or more than one. So, I would like to make the, the nomination or the motion at this point to appoint all eighteen of those applicants to this committee, and I'll read through their names. I'll also note that some of these folks are technically live outside the city. They're not city residents, but they are folks who use these transportation quarters every day. I think certainly fifty-one serves the entire county, if not the entire state. And I think it, it makes sense that, that folks who are not technically residents to help serve in this capacity and to provide their input on these transportation projects. So, I will nominate Roger Goze, Carl Driscoll, David Thomas, Kevin Musset, Chris Peters, Scott Petty, Forrest Hall, Madeline Goddard, Victoria, or excuse me, Victor Osteen, Tricia Carpenter, Jasmine Bigler, Reggie Richardson, Mike Buchert, Casey Shell, Stephen Hallgren, Cody Kramer, Vmet Aktes, and Eric London to be appointed to the Citizen Transportation Projects Committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, those eighteen individuals are appointed to the Transportation Projects Committee. We appreciate your service, and we look forward to much discussion and, and input on those transportation projects from those folks. And staff will be in touch with you soon to let you know what we're, how we're going to set those meetings up. All right, that takes us to item twelve. Is there a motion to enter executive session?
What did you get?
Oh, there's a whole nother meeting. I got ahead of myself. I will recess the City Council meeting at this point and call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting for February third, twenty-twenty. Up on item two, the consent docket, approval of our regular meeting minutes from January thirteenth. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Vote of five to zero, that item's approved. Down to general orders on item five, approve professional service agreement with Corolo Engineers for evaluation of the residual management and recycle system at the water treatment plant in the amount of three hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars, authorized total project expenditures of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, including a ten percent contingency, and approve the associated budget amendment. SUA twenty-two, Mr. Millis.
Evening. Thank you.
You thought I was going to skip you, didn't you? I'm sure you get to go home.
Had me worried for a minute.
He was going to wait until ten o'clock.
So, here in, in the first slide, you have a, an area map showing the, the water treatment plant location. And as the mayor mentioned, it's a professional service agreement with Corolo to address the solids and liquids residual systems. Now, the residuals are the byproducts or the leftovers of certain treatment processes. Here on this aerial layout of the water treatment plant, you can see the lagoons on the, on the left side of your screen or on the west. Note that the far west is the recycle pump station, where after the solids settle in the lagoon, the decanted water is returned to the raw water tank for, to go back into the treatment train, and thus get the most out of the, the water that we pay to pump thirty-five miles, so we can utilize as much of it as possible. There on the north, you see the stockpile area for the dewatered solids. And in the middle, the, the three small circles are solids contact unit clarifiers. And then to the left of those are the, the filter beds. These are just a couple of photos of those units I just mentioned, the clarifiers and the filters where, where the great bulk of the residuals come from. Those, the round clarifiers, what we'll do is the solids accumulate in the bottom, so periodically we'll, we'll drain out the bottom of those basins, and that goes into the lagoons. The filters, at a maximum of every hundred hours, we backwash the filters to clean out all the stuff that the filters have been capturing, and all that water goes to the lagoons. So, that's where all these, or where most of these residuals come from. This, this slide shows the strategic priority addressed by this project, as well as the funding discussion. It's a hundred, three hundred and eighty thousand total, including contingency, to be appropriated from the Water Capital Fund. And for a study type of project, three hundred and eighty sounds like a lot of money, so I wanted to, to explain that. It is a lot for your typical study, but in this case, the consultant will need to address or evaluate all those systems that I pointed out around the plant, including a mass balance, you know, how much, you know, what's the solid content of all the water that we either blow down or backwash, develop and investigate alternatives, also prepare an engineering report, which is kind of the before design to submit to the state, to get them involved and get their approval in, in the, in the improvements that we ultimately select, and prepare a residuals management plan for the state to show that we've thought through long-term and have a sustainable solution for the extra water and the extra solids that are a byproduct of the treatment process. So, so it is a pretty involved project, touching a lot of areas at the plant. And so, this time, I'd, I'd like to try to answer any questions about the recommendation we have.
Trustees, I'm sure there's lots of questions about wastewater residuals that you guys would like to bring up.
Really wouldn't.
It's a good term, by the way.
Yeah, try to make it sound more palatable.
It will never be palatable.
Until you treat it.
All right, trustees, questions, comments, or motions on this item?
Recommendation? Do you have a recommendation, Bill?
Sure. I recommend that the trustees authorize staff to execute a professional services agreement with Corolo Engineers in the amount of three hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars, and authorize three hundred and eighty thousand in total project expenditures, including contingency, and approve the, the related budget amendment to appropriate funds.
I will make a motion to accept Mr. Millis's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this item. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that item's approved.
Thank you very much.
All right. That takes us to the end of the SUA agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, SUA.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the SUA. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, SUA is now adjourned. At this point, I'd like to reconvene the Stillwater City Council at item twelve on the agenda, twelve, thirteen, twelve. Is there a motion to enter executive session?
Motion to enter executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to enter executive session as a Stillwater City Council. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, we'll now enter executive session. Thank you all.